Hello, now does it change? No. I can't even hear us.
Hello, hello, hello?
Hello?
Switch back to three four please. Hello, hello, hello? Hello, can you guys hear us? Hey guys, just checking if you can hear us. Hello, hello?
Oh yeah, is it just...
Hello? Hello, just checking.
Alright, well...
And this is the first one that I've had that would like that that would we could use that type of search on. So I'm glad you brought that up. And this is the first one that I've had that would like that that would we could use that type of search on. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay, thank you for pointing that back out.
Of course.
Email.
Yeah, of course.
How long can you do this? Is it any longer yet?
No, I am not 100% sure how that works. I know that you can tell them.
Yeah. I don't know if it was just nice. Hey, um, so just to make sure if I entered those three, I just have that white circle. There was the pop-up thing before that said teams would have to make it on some public.
Hi, Carrie.
Hey, Ty. How you doing?
Sorry, trust me.
Hey, no, he turning is better. Thank you.
He used to call me Mr. Ty in high school.
Mr. Ty.
Doctor, well, that's my wife, Dr. Ty. But he's always been Dr. Tyler. Used to be Dr. Jones, so we'd call her Indy.
Oh, that's pretty amazing.
She's the honorable name.
Okay. Oh, did you text me? Sometimes I don't get his texts when I'm in here. I don't know why.
Said Jim Reese, I was like, breaks down.
I know, it's Luke. There's been two occasions where he's like, I texted you and I'm like, and I just didn't have him. We needed a doorbell just for Luke, like, like a Luke's doorbell.
Somebody buzz.
Are we ready to go, Macy? Is she? Are we good to go, Macy?
Hi, Tanya. Can you please confirm you can hear us online?
Yeah, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Tanya, can you hear us?
I hear you.
Someone's on.
I hear you.
Okay, we can hear you now. We're getting some feedback that we'll try to work out.
Yeah, you know, everything's weird, like the picture is weird. But anyway. Is that me causing the feedback? Let me try.
Anybody's on top on? Let's try again. Me, thank you.
So am I the one causing the feedback?
No, it was, it was Nicole. She was doing it.
Okay, you?
Yeah, me. That's speaking, speaking in the third person.
I'm like, wait a second.
All right. Are we ready to go, Macy? Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 1st open meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Macy?
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sterling.
Here.
Trusty Corvilon. Trusty Corvilon, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just had some new pages open.
That's okay. Thank you, Tanya. Uh, trustee Maris.
Yes, here.
Trusty Miller.
Here.
Trusty Ty.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And to note for the record, Mayor Billy and trustee Larson are absent this evening.
All right, thank you. Um, both will get in to the consent agenda and then we have a special request before we get into the informational items. Any questions on the consent agenda? And I'll be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Macy?
Mayor Protem Sterling.
Yes.
Trusty Maris.
Yes.
Trusty Ty.
Yes.
Trusty Corvilon.
Yes.
And trustee Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's approved.
All right, fantastic. Um, now, we've had a request from trustee Miller to say a few words to remember Jim Miller, who was a previous mayor and who also recently passed. So it'll take a few minutes. Thank you, Luke.
Yeah, so as many of you know, um, you know, I grew up in Netherland and, um, one of my childhood friends was Nicole Miller and her parents, Jim and then Doris owned Master Goldsmiths, which is now the Kind Castle.
Yes.
Right across from the train car.
Yep.
And, uh, they were sort of the second family for, for me and us for them. Nicole and I were just a few months apart. Um, and so Jim was mayor from 1976 to 1978 and again from 1998 to 2002. Um, he passed away last month, September 4th. And his time here was, um, I think pretty impactful for Netherland. He was instrumental in creating this community center. He was part of creating the Mud Lake Open Space and Indian Peaks Neighborhood, um, Garber Room, all of that. And, uh, after he left Netherland, he moved down to Slida where Nicole and her family live and he was very active in the community there as well, building affordable housing and all kinds of civic projects. In talking to Nicole since his passing, her husband is a blacksmith and one of Jim's requests was to have a memorial bench. And so, um, his son-in-law, Harry, and their, um, and his grandson will be, um, hand-making a bench that they would hope to put at the community center. So I'll be, you know, in touch with Dawn or John to see when that, you know, when that comes to pass, but, um, I just wanted to, yeah, take a moment to acknowledge a, you know, a big figure in town and a lot of history. So, thanks.
Thanks, Luke, and thanks for thinking of it. All right. And with that, um, we'll go into our first informational item, 4.1 Emergency Ordinance 867 Flood Plane Regulations. John, is this you?
Thank you. This is just an informational item about an emergency ordinance that's coming before you at our next meeting. FEMA has adopted new flood plane regulations. Previously, we were able to auto, um, kind of auto approve those regulations and that was how we were kept in compliance. But in this go-around, they changed some of the details of what's happening. And so we actually need to pass a new ordinance that kind of allows us to continue to have flood insurance. So homeowners can continue to have flood insurance in the community. This came kind of right during my transition time and we did what we normally do and then the state, I think, thought we were approved to and this kind of came at the end that there was an extra step that we needed to follow. So we wanted to bring this forward. We think we have time to bring this forward in a reasonable fashion for you to consider and approve. And so what the, this information item is just to tell you what's coming before you and to, um, you know, if there's any questions or anything you have about what this ordinance does and how it works, I can answer that as well.
Any questions? Because part of it is we'll wait for the ordinance next week.
Oh, okay.
So I, I can actually speak to what's in the ordinance. One of the reasons we didn't bring it forward tonight is because we need to adopt it as an emergency ordinance that needs to be done by August 20, August, October 26th. It needs to be effective by October 26th. So when we adopt an ordinance in a regular course, it's not adopted, it's not effective until 30 days after publication. This ordinance, we want it to be effective immediately so that it's effective on October 24th. So there's no issues with the flood plane insurance. We just heard from the state person who helps with administration of the, um, helps with FEMA and the flood plane mapping. And he said that what, that the auto adoption is okay, but we need to have a couple of other things in the town's ordinance in order to meet all of the checkboxes for FEMA and, um, this flood map. And one of those things is just to reference our statutory authority under the Colorado Revised Statutes. Um, and then we also need to add two definitions.
Okay, so they're very like administrative.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
It's super minor, but it's, um, keeping in compliance and so it should be very straightforward.
Okay. Okay.
And so we need people to show up on October 15th so that we can have at least six of you approving that ordinance.
Did you took quorum? Okay. And if we got everyone that's potentially going to be there?
On the 15th, we have everybody showing up to the meeting, everybody in person, Tanya online.
Okay, all right, so.
So if anything changes, just let me know beforehand.
Yeah, that'd be very great. Okay, so otherwise we'll be there. Fantastic. If there's no further questions, we'll move on to the next item. Okey-dokey, I'm doing it. I'm going. All right, next one is the quarterly grants update. John?
All right, I'm just loading up my slideshow here. It wants to go. All right. Well, thank you all for hearing this presentation. You get quarterly updates on the grants we're working on. So this slideshow is a little bit long. I've tried to give an overview of the work that we're doing under each grant and kind of its alignment to the strategic goals that you guys created for '23 and '24. Um, I also included that document as an attachment. If there's questions about how it aligns, we can discuss that as well. The first one I've got on my list here is American Rescue Plan Funds. As you may know, we received federal funding to support pandemic recovery efforts back during 2020. So this was intended to include direct payments, unemployment benefits, aid to local governments, businesses, and healthcare sectors. This money needs to be appropriated by the end of this year and fully spent by the end of 2026. We currently have about $189,000 remaining in those funds. Of those funds, $124,000 is set aside for affordable housing development. And we've spent about $31,000 between the DOLA Local Capacity Planning Grant, which is the multi-jurisdictional housing authority work that's happening right now, and the housing coordinator position. There was $2,000 in match there. The other thing was the $6,000 to complete the title searches on town-owned parcels. That is complete now and that's kind of going through a final legal review before the board will see it again. There is a request later on this meeting tonight to decide whether or not the remainder of those funds should be continued to be dedicated to affordable housing or whether we should think about allocating them to support our co-responder program in 2025, which is currently unfunded after November. Uh, there's another staff report about that. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer. Um, all of these funds do need to be expended by December 2026. I do want to note that we do not have currently a housing project that we can put those funds to. And there is a lot of Prop 123 dollars out there to support affordable housing development when that happens. The other project on here that I should mention is the broadband project. We have, um, 40,000 set aside for that. That work is actually ongoing with Mavericks. They've kind of started lighting those fibers up. And so that work will just continue until they're completed. And then there's $25,000 in there as well for nonprofit support that we haven't really allocated. On the bottom of the slide here, you see this alignment to the strategic plan, which I believe are objectives 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Quick question on the, um, so Prop 123, I believe part of these ARPA funds were being set aside for affordable housing for some of the matching grants that we might be able to go for. So thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that's going to be the challenge is that we've got to figure, we've got these multiple priorities that could be used for that funding. And I think the question really is, do we want the co-responder program to continue or do we want to continue saving those monies for the affordable housing programs? I do think we might find creative ways to match those funds as we move forward, but that is a question that, that I don't really have a great answer to.
That's fair. Okay.
Uh, the Big Springs Egress Project, this is the FEMA grant. In 2020, we received congressionally-directed funding, which is funding that comes directly appropriated from Congress for the identification of an emergency egress route out of the Big Springs neighborhood. The grant award was $524,793 with $174,931 match from the town. Total project budget just under $700,699.725. At that time, a potential route was identified but was later shelved as we explored different options for a route. This summer, JVA, who's our on-call engineering firm, identified three new potential egress routes using updated LIDAR data that we acquired using funding from this grant. On August 20th, we held a work session that was attended by members of the BOT, Pro-SAB, DDA, SAB, Planning Commission, JVA, Ned Fire, and members of the public. This session included discussion of the three proposed routes, followed by a site walk where JVA collected additional data. We are presently working with potential stakeholders that are impacted by the project to achieve consensus on potential routes to continue exploring. Once this is completed, there will be a community event for the Big Springs neighbors and greater community to evaluate the routes and provide feedback. The potential options will then be brought forward to the Board of Trustees for consideration and then we'll do the final design work following that so that we're not spending money on routes that aren't going to happen. We really need to get this done by next summer. I'm hoping that we can move this project forward this year. The challenge here is that the three routes are very different and they have different safety implications. And so what we need to do is make sure that all stakeholders that might be impacted by any route are talked to and we have conversations with them fully to achieve consensus on what the best option is. So right now, there are a couple of impacted private property owners and I am working with them to determine whether or not routes are feasible along those lines or not. And so that's kind of like the next step before we start the greater public engagement. One thing I'd like to note about this as well is we have had conversations. There's, there's really seven routes that could work, but varying reasons why they may not. And it may be a good idea to think about designing two routes, just because then you have one that kind of goes south and you could have one that goes east or, or a different direction. Um, the problem with that is, is that we are in a situation, a situation fiscally where it might be good to limit the amount of match that we're required to put into this grant because to fully expend it, we're at that $174,000 mark. One of the things that we're thinking about is how we can save some of that match money. So we're not, we're not spending it on unnecessary parts of this project. So as far as alignment here, I think it's really objectives 3, 4, and 5. The co-responder program, I mentioned briefly, uh, we received a grant to of $167,890 from the Department of Local Affairs for the Police Officer Behavioral Health Support and Community Partnership Grant. What this does is it, it funds our co-responder who's, who's employed by Boulder County. Her name is Lynette Anderson. And it has been funding her work and her, all of the things that she needs to do her job. The grant originally was set to expire this summer, but Miranda, right before she left, got it, um, extended through November of 2024, which is great. That means though, that funding for December of 2024 and beyond remains uncertain and there is no alternative grants available to fund this at this time. I am recommending here that you discuss funding options for this critical service, including the possibility of cost sharing with Boulder County during an upcoming meeting in fall of 2024. And that actually is happening tonight. That was updated just a little bit. We have this on the, on tap to discuss. I want to share just a little bit more about this one. I have had some initial conversations with Boulder County about sharing this employee cost with us. It's about $120,000 a year and that's something that is a little bit outside of our wherewithal to handle on our own. But this position has been providing support throughout the peak-to-peak region and throughout Boulder County. And so there's a reasonable case to be made that this is something that we could share cost in. And I think it's something that Boulder County has expressed they're interested exploring with us. But one thing is, is agreements like that take time and budgeting time. And I think that right now, the critical thing is funding the position in December and then in 2025. And I think that there might be a light at the end of the tunnel through this kind of collaborative approach to her position. But that's why I was suggesting potentially using those ARPA funds, um, to provide this critical service. And I think in some ways, her work is really aligned to the housing work we're doing already. She works with the most kind of our most vulnerable populations here. And she's done it for a long time, and she's a really good job. And I think that, that's why I'm suggesting that you consider using those ARPA dollars to fund her position. I think there's a lot of alignment with this, with the strategic plan, but I think the most clear are objectives 1 and 5.
John, this is Tanya. I have a question about the co-responder. And we will probably get more into this when we get into our budget. But well, first off, how much is the salary for the co-responder?
The total cost is a little higher than the salary because we give Boulder County support for her position. So we are anticipating a total cost around $120,000 a year.
Wait, why are we paying for Boulder County?
She's an employee of Boulder County, so that's how the intergovernmental agreement was originally structured. And so she is employed by their team, so she gets access to their resources. And then she was serving Nederland when that grant existed. And that's one of the questions we've had for Boulder County. Since she does serve a greater area, is there an opportunity to collaborate on her salary? And I think the answer from them is yes as well. But we just have to figure out what that looks like, and it hasn't moved quickly enough to really have a confirmed number for the budget.
Yeah, well, once we find out, it would be good because, and this would be a big, greater conversation about our BCSO. Is there wiggle room in that amount that we spend? If we decrease services there to increase hers? Or, you know, if we find out the animal control, has that been fruitful? Have we used that a lot or not? Like, those are things I'd like to ask later in a budget conversation to find out if we can use some of that money to put in towards her position. I think she's as important as an officer, so.
Okay. I wrote that down. I think that's a good thing to be looking at.
Just to see, like, if there's any room for, because we aren't fully staffed yet with BCSO, or are we?
They're providing the officers. I think whether or not we're getting the local piece of that is a little bit of a different question, but they are providing the services, I think. But I think it's a good question about whether or not we can make room in our contract there. Staff does have a meeting with their staff early next week. And then this is coming to the board for a conversation about BCSO. And I think the sheriff will be attending that meeting, so we can have that conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, I think she's super important, so I think we need to find a way to keep that in our, in our, wherever, the way I'm looking for employees, but it's not really, she's not really an employee. But at our disposal, I think she's an important resource.
She has done great work here in Nederland, I think.
Yeah, that we need it. Okay, great. Thank you.
I agree with you, Tanya. They are absolutely just as important as having officers up here.
Alright, so the comprehensive plan, that's another Department of Local Affairs grant. We received $100,000 with a matching contribution of $100,000 for a total budget of $200,000. This plan is probably the most complicated plan that's been worked on in the town, and it's nearing completion. It did include a subarea plan for downtown. And Britt and I just yesterday received a kind of close-to-final draft of the comp plan that is about ready to go to Planning Commission this month. We would like to bring this to the Board of Trustees by the end of the year, and it just depends on, a little bit on the conversation with the Planning Commission to when it would come with their recommendation for approval or not. But hopefully, we'll get this done at the end of the year. This plan covers everything from economic and community vitality, sustainability, just resilience in the community, parks and recreation, open space, all of the things that we work on as a town. And it updates all of those goals, and it provides a really concrete plan for what the town should be doing for the next 10 years that's going to really, I think, be a helpful document for you as you work on your strategic plan. It also has some intersection for the DDA, especially with the subarea plan. And there's some additional work that might be able to happen with that subarea plan to really put everybody in a good position. One of the things that it makes recommendations about are design guidelines for downtown. And it also contemplates whether or not what's called an overlay district for downtown might be appropriate, which is basically a set of regulations for how we would manage that specific zone of the town. So that's something that could be done further based on this work. But overall, the comp plan is very close to being ready for adoption or consideration for adoption. Strategic plan alignment here, I think, again, are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. The SIPA grant, this is a digitization program. The town, to be perfectly frank, has a lot of records that are paper and are stored in the bathroom of this building, and it's not great. But what we've been doing is we received a grant to start digitizing those records so we can make them available to the public and make sure we have good continuity of records and all of that kind of thing. We don't have enough money to finish, but we do have enough money to spend what we have. Karina, who works at Town Hall, has been working to scan and upload BOT documents, which is all the minutes, ordinances, resolutions, all that kind of thing, outside of her working hours. And we anticipate those funds will be fully expended this fall. And then we'll be looking for additional funding opportunities to continue this project because it is an important one. I think the plan alignment here is objectives 3, 4, and 5. This is the EV charging grant here that we received through Charge Ahead Colorado. We received $50,000 charge-ahead grants to support the installation of new EV chargers. And then we partnered with Xcel Energy, who could reimburse, reimburse the town up to $40,000 to install the electrical infrastructure to support the Level 2 charging station that's currently turned on and the upcoming Level 3 charging station. The infrastructure for these chargers have been installed, and essentially what happened is the company that provides the data for the Level 3 charger is not able to service it right now. They had some capacity issues. So we had to find a new provider. I'm anticipating that that's going to be turned on very soon. As soon as they found the person that needs to do it, they just have to install the equipment or the SIM card for it, basically. Then they'll test it, and they'll be turned on. And then we'll be trying to get reimbursement from Xcel. One of our challenges here is that we needed a month of data before, I think, October 15th to show that we could get reimbursed from Xcel, and it's tight. And so I need to, I've been kind of making the requests to give us a little bit of leniency and grace there. And I think that potentially there are other funding programs that we could use to reimburse that charger. But to be 100% honest, I'm not sure that we're in great shape on that Level 3 charger reimbursement just because of the delays it saw this year. But we're going to continue working on that. I think there is money there, so we just got to see if we can find it.
So even articulating how we were pushed back in timeline doesn't give them?
I think there, there has been some frustration with ChargePoint, and I think that's where Xcel is, is not having the most. It's just, I think it's a long conversation is what it is. But I'm going to try to be a good partner and say, help us, we really need the help, and we're willing to do whatever it takes to make this work. So I'm hoping that it all works out, but it is a little bit gray right now about how that reimbursement could work. But this, I think, again, fits objectives 4 and 5. This is the sustainability grant that we received from Boulder County. As you guys know, there's a small tax that exists in Boulder County that was voted in a few years ago for sustainability efforts. And so the town has been receiving $15,000 annually under this program to fund our sustainability coordinator position. This basically allows us to pursue our sustainability priorities within the community and fosters collaboration across the county for this regional approach. Our sustainability coordinator left her position the day I got here. And so we have been a little bit limited in what we're able to do. But in really good news, we just hired someone, and her name is Cassidy. And she recently graduated from School of Mines and has been working as an AmeriCorps Vista in Grand Junction. And I think she's like well-aligned to this work and is going to do a great job. I think she's starting next week. But for now, I think we have enough to fund her position for 30 hours a week this year and next year. There's a potential option that we might be able to fund 2026 through the grant program as well. Last year, however, Miranda brought forward some initiatives to try to fund this position through planning. So what we've done, this position used, when I got here, it was under the parks, under Nikki. And I've moved it under Britt, so it's going to be in community development. I'm going to help oversee it as well. But we're going to really kind of put a little bit of a planning focus on here and try to achieve some of our planning goals that we have for sustainability. And then she'll be working in the greater space too, so she'll be collaborating across the whole space. The last thing I've got here is Town of Lyons has expressed interest in sharing this position. We're doing that with the Housing Coordinator position. So once that position is up and running, we'll have a good model for how that could work. So potentially, that's how we could fund it in 2026 as well. We likely don't need a full-time sustainability coordinator, and so this could be a really good model for us moving forward. I think the alignment here is 1, 2, 3, and 5. A grit removal, this is one of our projects that's completed. So we, we used to lack the equipment needed to remove grit from the treatment process, and that was really hard on our pumps and other mechanical equipment. And it was causing them to need to be replaced more frequently than necessary. So this project had a $400,000 budget, $120,000 grant with a $280,000 match. It was split between ARPA funds and then the CIP funds. This was successfully installed in January of 2024. The documentation has been submitted, and the project is complete. Also, no, this project was brought in under budget, but I don't know exactly, fairly significantly, but it was a good one. And this is aligned with objectives 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Also, no, for folks who are new, this was also one of the objectives on the master infrastructure plan. So that was pulled in as, and completed, so knocking things down where we can.
Multi-modal transportation plan, this is CDOT grant. And this is a planning effort to look at the transit-oriented infrastructure for all modes of transit, that's walking, bikes, mass transit, motor vehicles, the whole bit, through town. This work has been going for a while. It was originally awarded $175,000 with a $23,000 match to be split between the town and the NDA. The consultant is Ferris and Pierce, and they have been meeting with the boards and commissions. They've met with all of the boards and commissions at this point to review the recommended policies, projects, and programs. They're also working to kind of finalize that feedback that they've received. There was a steering committee meeting that was held on the 23rd of September for kind of a review of the planned findings. And now I think we're thinking this is going to be coming back before you next month for an initial kind of overview, and we're anticipating completion in December. I think this is aligned with objectives 3, 4, and 5. And this, I think, is really aligned with this greater need that the Netherlands community has expressed to really be focusing on our infrastructure around town, especially as it relates to sidewalks and safer routes to school and the kind of that whole bit. So I think this is actually a pretty important plan for us. Main Streets Grant, Safer Main Streets, otherwise known as the SMS Grant. This is a project to improve the crusher-fine sidewalks on Highway 72, to add a pedestrian crossing at First Street and Highway 119, and the library pedestrian crossing at Highway 72. It also installs traffic calming components to reduce speeds. We received $280,000 in funding from Dr. Cog to promote pedestrian safety and alternative transportation. The NDDA matched $70,000 for a total project budget of $350,000. This project has been going on for a while, and it's been kind of some moving targets there. There's been some starts and stops kind of related to some of the energy infrastructure along the route. But CDOT has this in their, what they call their field inspection review office. And we should get what they call concurrence any time now, which will allow us to put this project out to bid. Certain aspects of this project could be built before winter time, like the crossing signals and things like that. Certain parts may be, need to be built in the spring. But the cool thing about this, it says it needs to be completed by May of 2025. We just had a meeting with CDOT, and they said that's design date is May of 2025. So we have all of next summer to finish the project. This one is on track and will be done by, as soon as they can pour the concrete, basically.
One of the things I thought Nikki said was also going to be included in this, and correct me if I'm wrong, was actually cutting out part of the street and laying brick for like a more permanent crosswalk. Is that still part of the plan?
I, I think, dependent on CDOT concurrence, I think that's where we're working right now is on the highway piece of it. Because it involves the highway agents, like the highway agency regulations and all that kind of things.
I just don't want that piece to get lost because it's so easy for the paint to wear away. And people are like, where do I cross? And then they cross all over the place, so.
I think that was a major component of this as well. And also, I mean, there's been some conversations about having two crosswalks there, and if that's complicated. And I know those, those improvements have been contemplated and designed.
Got it. Thank you.
This project is similar. It's the TIPS project, and it's transportation improvement. It's another Dr. Cog grant, $1.5 million. This one's a little bit bigger. It involves creating a sidewalk on West First Street to connect the Park and Ride with the Visitor Center and somewhere on Jefferson Street. This adds quite a bit of public parking in that area on the right-of-way. And it also includes electric vehicle charging, bike racks, rain garden planter, and paving in the parking lot in North Jefferson. This is another project that's been going on a long time, and I honestly have a little bit of bad news about it. We need this project to be done next year. And JVA is working with CDOT on how we can navigate this process. But essentially, what's happened is there's some temporary easements that are required. This project ended up being federally funded, which is something that I think when it was awarded, wasn't fully understood. But that means it's subject to the Uniform Act, which means that there are very complicated procedures related to getting temporary easements that are going to delay the project five to six weeks, probably at least. I think we're pretty close to the point where we can have those negotiations the way that are legally required. And then once that's done, the engineering is done, so we just need that concurrence again from CDOT. So this one is going to be one that we need to move very quickly on when it happens. And I think as long as we get it out to bid on time, we're probably going to be fine. But this is one that I've been holding JVA to the fire on a little bit just to make sure we get it across the finish line because it is a significant amount of money that we are putting in, and we've already spent dollars. So we want to make sure that we get those reimbursed.
Okay, but otherwise, all the temporary easements, they're working through all of that. At this point, we don't anticipate having to go out to bid, I mean, 2025, early 2025, I'm hoping?
I hope so.
Okay.
That's my hope. It's, you have to have a licensed negotiator because basically what the Uniform Act tries to protect is people getting pressured into sell or do things with their property. And so that's where we have to just be careful. And so I think that in principle, there's nothing that should be detrimental to anybody in this. It's just a matter of getting the right people at the table so that we get the right piece of paper. Tourism Management Grant, this is the grant that we got to develop, enhance or manage visitor experience in Colorado. It was a $20,000 grant with $5,000 matching from the Visitor Center budget for branding and creative identity. The project is done. It's, this is basically the branding guidelines and the logo and all of that stuff. I think this one is a little bit less directly aligned to the strategic plan, but I think it does kind of align with, with objective number 5. Alright, the second section is just partner grants that we have. This one is the ARPA Mental Health Funding, which is a Boulder County grant. Boulder County Board of Commissioners allocated funding from ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan, to expand existing services for mental health and social resilience programs from the pandemic recovery and relief projects. The Peak-to-Peak Housing and Human Services Alliance was awarded funding for this, for it to create a training program, such as in-person mental health first aid and some safe talk trainings and things like that. They're nationally recognized programs taught by certified instructors with connections to this mountain community here to ensure cultural and situational relevancy. Since P2P HHS is not a 501(c)(3), they needed a fiscal sponsor for this. The town offered to serve in such a capacity and in collaboration, received $37,000. This, we, this is kind of happening right when Miranda left. And so we worked, when I got here, one of the first jobs was making sure that we had an MOU with the county and to P2P HHS to create that MOU that you approved in September, at the second meeting in September. And that's all been signed by us and the county, and everybody's on board. Those, those trainings are going to be starting very soon within the community, and that's Katrina Harms, who's kind of running that program. These are aligned with the objective 5 and 6.
Just to, just to be totally clear, we can't apply for these same funds to fund our mental health liaison?
It's not available anymore because it's already been allocated.
Alright.
Oh. Okay, Bear Resistance Trashcan Containers. Boulder Bear Coalition received funding to purchase up to 200 bear-resistant trash containers, which were originally intended to be distributed to residents of Old Town interested in having one. Old Town was selected as a preferred neighborhood due to it being a high-density residential zone with, with bear neighbors, very close. However, there were additional neighbors regionally who did receive them. And as long as they're available, I think people within the region can reach out and get a trash can as long as they're there. They are at the transfer station. I don't know how many more they have, but the distribution has been occurring for the last couple of weeks now. I think this is aligned with objective 3, 4, 5, and 6. As a note, there is a CPW Bear Resistant Trash Container Grant available right now. And we could potentially use that to put trashcans downtown or other bear-resistant trashcan programs if we wanted to explore that. So I'm just kind of putting that out there. Broadband Fiber Installation, this is part of that ARPA funding that we talked about. The town in Gilpin County and Clear Creek County applied for a grant to do, to improve broadband installation throughout that kind of general region. We did receive an award. Mayor Pro Tem Sterling and I went to a Dr. Cog event a few weeks ago and received that award. It's what's called a Metro Vision Award for the work. But we were awarded a total, the project was awarded $8,667,692. And Maverick matched that grant, so it ended up being just a little bit over $17 million for this project. The Netherlands broadband part of this is mostly last mile broadband, which is like the part that connects from the main trunk lines into neighborhoods and things like that, so they can build connections to homes. And that's what they're working on right now. I don't have a really great idea for when this is all going to be completed in, in Netherlands. And there's some interest, I think, from the partners to apply for additional funding to keep working on this. And some of this would be related to cell phone service too, in places like Holk Creek Canyon and Boulder Canyon, where we know we have these gaps in making, you know, a little bit more cohesive coverage. But we haven't quite got to the part where we're, we're talking about money or participation yet. Climate reduction or pollution reduction act. This is one that is really not a grant that we received, but this was on the presentation, so I just thought I'd throw it in here. This is a really cool program the state's doing called Furben. I don't know if that's what everybody calls it, but that's what I call it because I like saying Furben. It's basically, they receive, there's a lot of money at Dr. Cog right now and through Excel to do electrification work. And there's a lot of potential intersection in Netherlands. One of the things we've talked about is this building has a little microgrid on it for power resiliency, especially if we start seeing power turn off more for wildfire danger. But there's opportunities to install either smaller microgrids throughout town or potentially like a bigger one, just depending on what we can get funded and what makes sense engineering wise. There's also opportunities to look at electrifying some certain parts of town where we have challenges with gas running anyway. And so all these funding sources are coming out. There's also going to be residential, like a huge amount of money for residential homes to do things like heat pumps and other energy upgrades to their houses. Dr. Cog is hiring the staff right now to run this program. We've been going to the meetings and I think our new sustainability coordinator will probably take this over. But we really want to be involved in these efforts, both on the town side and making sure that residents have access to these, these funding sources. Cause it's going to be fairly significant amount of money. So right now, there's not a lot to say, other than this is probably going to be something we start talking about in January. I think objectives alignment are most clearly three, four, five and six. Wildfire protection plan, this you guys recently heard about and approved. It's basically the, it was match, the, the Colorado Water Conservation Board provided match funding to the town and Ned Fire Protection to create a wildlife, a wildfire protection plan. We just talked about this the other night and basically the plan is complete that was presented to you last month. And they've moved into the phase of community education and outreach. One thing I do want to add to that is we've been working on an emergency plan, which is not directly related to this grant. But that's something that we've been, especially, you know, just with the, the complexities of managing the ever evolving state of fire here. We're really trying to make sure that we're aligned on our emergency plan to the, what was created with this plan. So that might be something that we bring forward to you to kind of consider and tell you more about in the near future. This one, you probably could tie to all of the goals, but I think it's most clearly two, three, four, five and six. Congressional directed spending. So in 2023, you applied to do a feasibility assessment of a secondary bridge. And this application was given to both Senator Bennett and Hickinlooper, who typically bring those forward together, working as a team as they are. It was selected to move forward into the appropriation project, process, but it was not selected to receive funds. I think it's likely the reason is, is that we haven't reached a far enough state of design work to have a conceptual idea of where the bridge will be, what it looks like, what it could, what it could do and how, you know, all the different questions that exist there. So I think one of the things that we really need to do is really bring this forward in some kind of discussion period or a work session or a community listening session to really determine whether or not we can identify the preferred location for this bridge. And then really see if we can get to maybe a shovel ready design. And I think then, once we get to that point, a CDS request would make a lot of sense. CDS requests don't require funding or a match. And we have fairly good relationships with all our, our congressional members. So I think that that's what we want to do as a next step, is really identify how this bridge is going to work.
Didn't Miranda, before she left, also apply for the 2024 round?
That was the one we weren't funded through.
Okay, because we had applied, I thought, also in 2023, got declined, but then reapplied in 2024.
I know, I received the, no, we had, we had moved forward in 2024, but we definitely got turned down in the appropriations.
Okay.
But we could apply again, you can apply for basically unlimited projects from that funding. It's just a matter of, it's a little bit more of a, a guessing game about what they're going to fund sometimes.
Okay, and just to be clear, like that was your sort of interpretation? Or did they give like very direct feedback as to why we were declined?
I think it was, that's kind of my interpretation and I could get more direct feedback, but I understand that they were looking for shovel ready projects that could be completed within the appropriation cycle.
Okay.
Local planning capacity housing coordinator. This is another grant that Miranda applied for right before she left and she received it. It's a $160,000 grant from DOLA in partnership with the town alliance. It requires 40,000 in matching funds to be split between both towns. This is that $20,000 dedicated in ARPA for this purpose. The intent of this grant is to hire a housing coordinator that could work across both jurisdictions to help forward affordable housing goals. We have signed the contract with DOLA and I think the big thing here is it's a little difficult to figure out how a staff member can work for two towns at once. And there's a lot of insurance issues to work out and like that kind of thing. I think we've mostly got that figured out. This will be a two-year position. I think we've got most of the salary details and benefits and all that kind of thing figured out. There's just a little bit of work to make sure, you know, things like what happens if the person is hurt? Like how does it work with workman's comp, which will probably be our workman's comp because we're the fiscal sponsor. But I think we're very close to getting this done. We'd really like to have this person on board by the holiday season, if possible. I think strategically I admit here is objective three, four, five and six. Multi-jurisdictional housing authority, this is a very similar grant. It's from the same DOLA program. Gilpin County was awarded 104,000 to study the feasibility of creating a multi-jurisdictional housing authority and to develop fast track permitting policies. We partnered with them along with Lions and I think Blackhawk directly partnered it as well to provide collaboration between our jurisdictions and enhance our collective capacity to expedite the implementation of housing initiatives. Affordable housing projects are much easier to manage regionally. They're very expensive and I think for mountain communities, using our partners is a really effective strategy. We also, by participating in these efforts, get credit in Prop 123 for housing that's created with our efforts. And so basically where we are on this is an RFP was published earlier this year. It didn't receive a qualified response. And so what we have been doing is working to republish this RFP. I brought one that I had previously written that does exactly the same thing. I actually have all the things we need to do this, but it requires, it really probably requires a consultant, just because there's so many parties. And so what we've been doing is modifying the RFP and then we've identified consultants we're going to directly send it to. So hopefully we'll get a qualified response. And then what will happen is they will do some engagement work and that would need to involve the board because you would need to be represented on this new board. It would be a, basically a quasi-government that has some statutory authorities. But you would be represented in those efforts so that that board could work across jurisdictions to achieve housing goals. And those housing goals, one thing I want to note is they are, a multi-jurisdictional housing authority has certain statutory authority already that's given to it by the state. It could be the, you know, the IGA that would form this agreement, which is an intergovernmental agreement between the entities, could kind of say what powers you plan to execute, although, you know, with it being in statute, it's a little bit of a complicated conversation. But the point is, is that you would have representation on that board and we would be able to work collaboratively and access, and access more money and have some, you know, some ability to run programs that we wouldn't be able to run on our own. Like maybe a habitability program for mobile homes or, or different things like that, that's to provide support in kind of that affordable housing space.
When you say that we get credit for Prop 123, is that like an actual, like we get credit? Or it's kind of like, it's cool that we do that?
If there's a project that happens that we participate in, then we can count that towards our requirement under Prop 123.
So if there's a project that happens under the multi-jurisdictional authority, then it counts towards, okay.
And we could do the same, like if Lions had a project and we wanted to put dollars into it, we would get credit for those housing units as well. So it's kind of one of the quirky things about the program.
But for this, for when it's going to come to fruition, this multi-jurisdictional authority, I mean, isn't that still quite a ways off?
I would anticipate if we can get this RFP out, which should be very soon, we could probably bring in consultants on by the end of the year, which would mean that we probably have the documents you need to consider that at the board level, depending on the community engagement that's involved, like by summertime. So I don't think it'll be too long, but it probably, for that initial, I, I, I think that if we, meeting the requirement under the initial deadline may be a little tough, but as Prop 123 continues, this organization would, there'll be other goals that are set over time too, I think.
Yeah, because we have a deadline of 2026, I think.
Right, essentially, yeah. And we had to be under permit by that point.
Under permit 13, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Volunteer driver program. This one is a little bit of a complicated one. This is a partnership with Peak to Peak Housing and Human Services Alliance again, and the Mountain Mobility Work Group. We had been working with Boulder County to establish and operate a volunteer driver pilot program as a door-to-door assisted transportation service for seniors, individuals with disabilities and low income individuals who live in the, in the peak to peak region. We had planned on serving as a fiscal sponsor for this program because in a lot of ways, we're the, the kind of the hub of this area and we can, we have the capacity to serve the greater community. So as this program was originally contemplated, there were, we were thinking it would be covered under our SIRS insurance, which is kind of what's caused the delay in this program. Boulder County, as they developed their contract, they, they increased the insurance requirements to a point that we cannot afford to do what they asked us to do. And it basically has brought into question and kind of a, a big policy issue that I need to bring before you as well, that we're kind of working through right now, about how we handle volunteers in Netherlands. And there are some significant questions about liability for the town and how we do volunteers. And there's ways to kind of combat that, but specifically having people drive their own cars as a volunteer, working under this program, under the auspices of the city, or the town, I'm sorry, creates problems. So what we have done is we have talked to Boulder County about how we can implement this and asked for a greater administrative fee from the funding so that we can run the, the, like, so the driver will be an employee of the town, which corrects the problem, but the problem of course becomes then that there's funding levels for this are more limited. So we're working with Boulder right now to kind of address those, those problems. And I think the intention would be to show this could work, get the structure in place. And then Boulder is going to continue to work on more funding so that we can, we can hopefully have this service exist.
Okay, so it's still not, it's not up and running yet?
It's not.
Yeah, okay. Hmm, insurance check might be a good little proactive thing in the future, I guess.
Yeah.
Thanks, okay.
I have a couple of future grants here. These are pretty basic. One thing I do want to kind of preface this with is that we are going to be facing a deficit next year. And I think we can handle it. We're going to be presenting you with kind of our initial thoughts about expenditures next meeting. But we're going to really need to be careful next year and make sure that we're really strategic in what we're doing. And I think that is what I want to kind of preface this conversation around. There are opportunities either through maybe a strategic conversation about our reserves in our water and wastewater fund for projects that are needed in our wastewater space and water space. And also maybe potentially partnering with the DDA on infrastructure projects. But in terms of just having general funds kind of availability for match, it's going to be a problem probably next year for the most part. So I'm presenting these grants, these are kind of strategically picked by me, just of things that we might be able to start working on. The first thing that I'd like to do is start working with the Colorado Water Conservation Board. They offer several different grants that are available for water projects on both the water, wastewater and stormwater kind of sides of that. And I think that there's, there's some projects that we need to address soon. One of them, of course, is, is what we do with planning for our wastewater treatment in the future. But there's some things that we could do to optimize our process there that could be very valuable to us in terms of extending the longevity of the plant. We have some work that is contemplated in the, in the capital plan. Here you see the intake to the water treatment facility. And there is some resiliency that could be done here to kind of make sure that even in low flows of the creek, water still comes into the plant, which would be really important. And also some fire resiliency here. So in case of a fire further upstream, we wouldn't be affected by like a mudslide or something like that. So those are some of the work that we've been contemplating. CWCB has forgivable loans, they have revolving loans, they have grants. There's a bunch of different kinds of funding sources. And I think what I would really like to do next year is to really start thinking about prioritizing our capital projects, which you will see at our next meeting, how our, our capital projects in water and wastewater land are looking. And start making sure that we're on the, on the table and having conversations with them, so we're in their planning efforts. So when we do start bringing these projects forward, we have, we have the, the background needed for it. One project that could come up next year that we could potentially fund through a grant, either through the CWCB, which is this group, or the Department of Local Affairs, which I'll show you in a bit, is some of our, our waste, our, our collections infrastructure, which is our sewer pipes. We would like to do a lining project on some of the older pipe and it's a $2 million project. So we have some work there to do and I have some thoughts about how we could do it that would maximize grant opportunities for the town. But overall, I think just working on our water and wastewater infrastructure really align with objective two, three, four, five and six. Netherlands ice rink and tennis park. This was originally developed under a GOCO grant in 20, in 2005. And over the last 18 years, it's been become a really meaningful asset. And I think it's a really good thing for our community. I think it's one of the hearts of our community that maybe doesn't get touched by tourism as much. It's a place the community can gather and be a, you know, a place with just the community, which is cool. There's been some initial work done about conceptualizing what a rehab of that facility would look like. And there was some initial plans to apply for a GOCO grant this year to fund that construction project. With the turnover and everything that's been happening, that didn't happen. But I think it still could happen. I think they repaired most of the rink for this year, so I think we should have no problems with that. But we've been talking about potentially looking at Colorado Parks and Wildlife Land and Water Conservation Fund is another option to fund this park. Again, this kind of comes along the lines of this whole fiscal situation that we're looking at. And so I think the priority should be to see if we can find hopefully no match grants for this. And there may be some incremental improvements that could happen there. But this is a project in our Parks and Recreation Open Space Land that I think has been prioritized by Prostab and we would like to bring forward if we can find match for it.
Oh, hey, John, this is Tanya, real quick. There is some money, over $100,000 that has been kind of set aside for a GOCO grant from the Parks Department. I can send you this, the slide, it'll be in our budget. It was a, it's been in our budget unspent now for at least five years, maybe six. It was from the Affordable Housing Project. They gave us money because they failed to create some pathways that they said they were going to do. And they gave us over $100,000 and it's meant to be used for these sort of purposes. And last I checked, Prostab was hanging on to this, not Prostab, but Parks Department was hanging on to this for grant, matching grant.
That's the money from tungsten village, is that right?
Yeah, that's $100,000.
I apologize, I didn't have that in here. I didn't understand.
No, that's, that's.
I should have asked about that. Thank you. That's, that's really good to know.
And so I, last time I had brought up that money with another project in mind, I was told that this money's on hold for any kind of grant, matching grant that has to do with Parks and Rec. So, um, so hopefully it can be used within the next couple of years. It'd be great. I just wanted to let you know, there is, it's not a ton, but it is over $100,000.
That's probably enough to match on.
So there's also like another like 25 or 50 from Eldora that they gave us when they used our Gristio Field as a parking lot. And, and so there was some of that too, that's in that same, it's on that same slide in the budget. I could, I could find it later and send it to you, but I'm sure it'll show up again with Rita, but anyway.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, we're getting close to the end here. Wildfire mitigation grants. This has been a big one, big conversation. We all know there's a lot of mitigation work needing to happen. We've identified some grants, but again, this is one with match that's been problematic. One thing that's been really cool that happened this summer is, and I don't know Luke, if you want to mention, but Moose Meadows had like some significant volunteer-led fire mitigation work that happened there just a few weeks ago now. And it was really successful and we had a lot of volunteers. I know I just said that we were having an issue figuring out how we manage volunteers, but I am wondering if we could build a good program for wildfire mitigation with volunteers and then hopefully continue to look for these grants for wildfire mitigation. There is probably going to be additional funding from Boulder County and other resources, but it's just if we can afford a $20,000 match for this program. But I think this is like one of our most critical objectives around town, is to really be thinking about these mitigation efforts. But I think this is like one of our most critical objectives around town is to really be thinking about these mitigation efforts. And so this is something I'd like to prioritize next year to both fix the volunteer program and see how many of these grants we can get. And you know, some of them are smaller, but you know. We've got, we've probably, I don't want to say we have endless projects, but we've got enough to keep busy for a long time.
Yeah, that was one thing that I know ProSAB has been, you know, really trying to push the volunteer program as a way to harness some manpower to accomplish. You know, a lot of their agenda and, you know, fire mitigation obviously is a great candidate for that because it just takes a lot of legwork and muscle. And yeah, I think if we can harness that, I mean, based on the excellent turnout, I think that's definitely something we can do, especially when. Those areas of fire mitigation are part of, you know, a smaller neighborhood or community, so you could get. A large number of the residents in that area to, to jump in, so.
All right, this is the last one. This is a grant.
Wait, I'm sorry, this is time I have a question. Has there been any kind of conversation about allowing people to harvest the wood for fireplaces that I know that people pay a lot of money? So we get volunteers to come in, clear it up. Can they take it home with them? Can we have some incentives like that maybe for the volunteerism?
Absolutely. And we also worked with EFA on the last one to bring it to people who don't have access to it. So I think that is something we should keep working on.
Yeah, and that was a big part of the Moose Meadows cleanup was that, you know, everybody could pretty much take as much firewood as they. That was so, 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 but there's still wood up there for anybody who wants it.
There is so much wood, yeah.
All right, this is the last one I've got for you. You have received a fair amount of grants from the Department of Local Affairs. But one program you haven't taken as much advantage of is the, what's called the Energy Impact Assistant Fund. And this is like money that comes from mining impacted communities, and Netherlands is a mining impacted community. Grants in this program range from two hundred thousand to one hundred, to a million dollars. And I think one of the reasons that you haven't applied before is because they require a one to one match. But I think that one of the things we should think about is there are significant number of projects on our capital plan that are one to $2 million. And so for instance, like a sewer project that's $2 million, if we're able to use. Responsibly use some of our reserves to pay for that project and say we spent a million dollars and we can get a million dollars of leverage for that. It would be really useful way to start meeting some of our infrastructure needs. The smaller grants are really, I, I'm going to be honest, I've never not gotten one of these grants that I've applied for, and I've applied for like twenty of them. And usually the million dollar range. And like, I think DOLA would really like us to participate in this program. And so one of the things I'd really like to talk to you guys about in this budget process, and maybe on the twenty ninth, when we have our work session. Is what is a responsible policy for how you would like to use reserves? And I know I've heard, you know, we want to save them for the wastewater treatment facility. I think that's a great thing to say, but I just wanted to kind of bring forward this idea that. We have a significant amount of deferred capital maintenance that needs to happen. And I think this could be a source of funding that while expensive is one of the easier grants to manage. It's pretty much have a project, get funded, and then you can spend the money. And there's not a lot of extra requirements that make the money more expensive. So I have, we've, I know that grants are successful in the space of water wastewater infrastructure especially. But things like dams and, and working on pipes, we've done hydroelectric units and pressure reducing valves. We've replaced tanks, things like that. Those are all things that could be really good for this project or for this program. The other thing that they'll do, they won't rebuild street tops, but we could consider a downtown project using. If DDA wanted to partner with us on a grant like this for how we're going to plan on rebuilding First and Second Street and some of the other infrastructure in and around downtown. That's also something that probably be willing to partner with us on in this area where we could really. Just maximize how many dollars we can get. The other really cool thing about DOLA funds is because they're not federal money, you can stack them with other dollars that you can get from other grants. So you can really get three to one or better return on your money using DOLA. So Chris Lemay is our representative. I don't know if you've all met him, but he's basically our. He's, he's our, he's our DOLA Santa Claus person is basically what he is. He brings the money. And so he did our strategic plan a couple of years ago. He really looks out for Netherlands a lot. And I think that there could be a conversation about how we could use these funds in the future, even if we choose not to do one next year. I think it's something that needs to be on our radar. That's all I've got for you on grants.
Any other questions from the trustees?
Yeah, this is Tanya. There was a bunch of things where it's like, we need to get back to talk about this again. Well, obviously the coresponder, stuff about the Big Springs egress, do we go for one plan or two? Safer Main Street. I had a separate question about that, but anyway, there was five or six things that I could think of that you were like, well, I think we need to bring this back and talk about it. Can we have a meeting dedicated to coming back and talking about some of the issues on here that. Obviously the more urgent ones sooner than later, but I just don't want another quarter to come by, and then we have the same, like, we need to get back. To discuss aspects of it.
A lot of these are going to roll into our budget conversations, I'm assuming, John?
Yes, and I would like to, what I would really like to focus on is not having that happen, too. I would like, in my perfect world, we apply for grants that make sense next year, but especially given our, our considerations on the budget. I'd like to bring all of these projects completion so that we're done with them. And I think it's reasonable to expect that we can do that. I just want to make sure that I'm, one of the things that happened in the Big Springs project specifically is that. The conversation changed when we got in the room, and then it affected other stakeholders. So I want to make sure that they're adequately engaged before we start knowing for sure which route. But those are things I would love to bring back to you in the very immediate future. So I, I will do so. I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, good, great. And then regarding the safer main streets, I saw it said like it needs to be completed by May twenty twenty five. And that RFPs are going to go out in the next couple of weeks, but we only have a couple of months before the ground really freezes. And I mean, it's unreasonable to think about doing work, really, unless we have a really weird winter. We could, it could be. So is the hope to finish it like before the new year, before the grounds really freeze, or?
There's a couple of pieces that could be done, like, so there's some blinking crossing lights that go with the crosswalks and things like that, some of that infrastructure. And so we have contemplated like, it just depends on when CDOT signs off. But if we can get that RFP out and get that contractor on board, some of the work could happen this winter, and then they could maybe mobilize and be ready. As soon as the ground thaws the spring so that we won't be impacted during tourism season. And that's kind of what I was thinking is before crowds get up, we want to try to get this done.
But is the May, is the May twenty twenty five a self imposed deadline, or is it a fiscal deadline?
Fiscal, and it's for design, which will, we'll meet that.
Oh.
No problem. The tips grant though, has similar deadline, and that's the one I'm worried about is the tips program.
Right, because you were saying about the bureaucracy of some of the easements or something.
Yeah, but we, we've been, we've been really. Aggressively working on that. So JVA needs to kind of manage that a little bit. So I've been meeting with them weekly to make sure that we get that contractor on board. And as soon as that happens, we can move forward with the negotiations we need, and then it should be a relatively quick process after that. He told me today, he thinks we're about five months out from submitting the final design, or five weeks out, not five months, sorry.
Do you think it's going to change very much from the original design? I know it was way before your time. There was an original design in which we were going to lose about six or seven parking spots in the visitor center parking lot.
I think that's what.
Is, is that what you're working on with the easements and stuff?
That's what I've seen, but there is like a net increase on Jackson and then moving up towards RTD lot, like in just parking on the right away. So I think, I think it's a kind of a, I never, it always feels bad to lose parking, but I think we will.
End up gaining.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tanya. Any other questions from the trustees? All right, let's roll into our first action item, five point one, the appointment to ProSAB, an alternate vacancy. Macy, is this you? All right, go for it.
All right, so good evening all. At the regular board meeting, the Board of Trustees on October third, twenty twenty three, so almost a year ago. The board unanimously approved for Kate, I'm going to mess up her last name, Esquierdo, to be appointed to ProSAB as an alternate member. Her term would have ended in June first, twenty twenty six. However, this past July of twenty twenty four, Kate vacated her term on ProSAB, creating one vacancy in the alternate position. So I opened the applications on August ninth for this position. And a few others on advisory boards with a due date of Friday, August thirtieth. And in that time, we received three applications for the ProSAB alternate vacancy. They were from James Navratil, Nellie Mato, and Caroline Guzan. So ProSAB met on September nineteenth, just a couple of weeks ago. And during their meeting, Navratil, James withdrew his application. Nellie Mato was not in attendance for the meeting, and ProSAB unanimously recommended Caroline Guzan for appointment to the alternate position on ProSAB. So my question to you is, who do you want to appoint to the ProSAB alternate seat with a term date ending of June one, twenty twenty six? I did send the board packet to Caroline and Nellie, and Caroline did mention that she would be in attendance tonight. So I noticed there are a couple of guests online, Caroline, Caroline, if, if one of you is, if you are one of the guests online, please let us know.
Caroline, we're asking for you to come off mute if you are in attendance.
And if not, if the board can give me direction on who you think should be appointed to fill the vacancy for the alternate position on ProSAB, please.
All right, let's ask first for any clarifying questions from the Board of Trustees before we go to public comment. Hearing none, there's no one in the room, so we'll take a raise of hands online if there are anybody who wants to provide a public comment. Anybody raise their hand? All right, I'm going to take that as none. And we'll bring it back to the BOT for discussion. So it was Carolyn who had attended in person, ProSAB unanimously supported her appointments. Any other discussion items here? I guess I'll look to Trustee Miller, you are on ProSAB, so offer it up.
Yeah, I will say that Caroline really knocked it out of the park with her interview during the ProSAB meeting. Everybody asked really good questions and her answers were kind of. Better than you could hope for, which is why the other candidate decided to withdraw, they said, you know what? You should do this. This is, this is the job for you. And everyone else on ProSAB agreed, so. I can't say with enough confidence, I mean, I can.
You can say with enough.
I can say with extreme confidence that Caroline is, would be an excellent addition to the board.
Okay.
This is Tanya. I just want to honor ProSAB's vote and nominate Carolyn Guzan to, if I don't pronounce it right, to ProSAB. Is this a, uh, say, what's the word I'm looking for? Extra position, or is this a full seat?
The alternate.
It's the alternate.
That's, thank you. Okay, yeah, I'd like to nominate her for the alternate position for ProSAB.
And I'll second that.
I'll take that as a motion in a second. Macy?
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
And Trustee Corvelon.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
All right, and that was our one and only action item. Going on to discussion items, six dot one, coresponder funding. I think we've already had a little precursor to this earlier, and so Jonathan, take it us away.
Mayor Protam and trustees, I'm bringing two questions before you tonight. One, can the town allocate funding for the coresponder program in December of twenty twenty four? And two, can the town secure funding for the coresponder program in twenty twenty five? As a sub question, can ARPA funds, which have been allocated for affordable housing projects, be utilized to fund the coresponder program in twenty twenty five? I did give you a little bit of background, but basically our coresponder program, which is staffed by Lynette Anderson. Who is on this meeting tonight, if you'd like to hear from her directly, plays a very critical role in addressing mental health crises within our community. This program was initially supported by the public or the Peace Officer Mental Health Grant, which was scheduled to terminate in June of twenty twenty four. However, due to the efforts of Miranda Fisher, the grant was extended through November of twenty twenty four. At present, there are no additional grant funds available, nor are there any known grant funding opportunities identified by town staff. That would cover the cost of the program beyond November of twenty twenty four. As such, we should be considering both short and long term funding strategies to consider, to ensure the continuation of this program. I included several attachments to my staff report that detail the work that Lynette has done and the greater coresponder program as well. It's important to note that she is responsible for much of the work in the P two P region and kind of in unincorporated Boulder County. Funding requirements, this is something that we can talk to Boulder about a little bit. There's some room here for conversations. But we're estimating that the cost in December is about $20,000. And we, we will work with Boulder to like identify the right number. This is an information item. It's not the action item related to this. But we really need to secure the funding. I think one of the things for Lynette that's difficult is that. Her job ends in November if we are unable to fund it, and so she needs to be thinking about her future, too. And I think ultimately, I won't speak for her, but I think she loves this community and the work she's doing here. So I wanted to bring forward this potential solution that could fund her, her position. In twenty twenty five, the project cost is, is about $125,000. That includes the coresponder salary, the support services and equipment that she uses in the course of her duties. And it's a pretty significant financial commitment. So we're going to need to make sure that we identify stable and secure funding sources. I kind of talked about this a little bit, but a lot of the data about this program shows that Lynette has a greater impact than just on Netherlands. And there's an opportunity to collaborate with Boulder County on this. I did have a county manager to town administrator conversation today about whether or not there might be some room to collaborate here. And of course, this is a BOCC decision, Board of County Commissioners, and it likely needs to happen more next year than, I think we're. We're, it's hard to have this conversation now, but I think they're open to having this conversation with us. So in some ways, this would give us the ability to cover the critical need, which is next year. And then continue working on funding this, this service in a sustainable way in the future. So that's kind of what I have proposed to you. There are alternatives here, of course. There's no. Really clear funding source within the general fund that we can use to fund this position. I think that I kind of mentioned this in my staff report, but it's possible that next year we could consider a public safety tax potentially. That would expand what was already done by the town that would allow us to cover her position. But that's a relatively new tax here. I'm not sure what the appetite is for a tax increase, and that's something that would need to happen. In a Tabor election, which is like the end of the year election. And that would involve a fairly significant conversation in the community. And so I think that for us right now, if we want to continue the program, the best option is probably to use the ARPA dollars. And then to work with our partners in the county to kind of come up with a regional collaboration to fund her position in the future. I know I've talked about this fairly significantly already, so that's kind of what I wanted to tell you. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to take them.
A clarification. Go ahead, Tanya.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Clarification point, so under the grants review, it says the town of Netherlands has 189,342 remaining in ARPA funds. Status is that of the 124,000 set aside for affordable housing, 31,000 has been allocated as follows. But where's the remaining? After the, between the 189?
Sorry about that. I should have explained that better. Those are the other allocated dollars from ARPA for other programs that have gone. There was a, there's a couple of other sources.
Okay, so it was accounted for.
Yeah, it's basically, it's like the Mavericks dollars that were for the broadband project. And then there was a, I forget what it was called, Community Partnership Fund as well.
Okay.
And that's how you get the whole way up there.
Okay, that's how you get the whole way up there. Okay, I was just hoping maybe there was a clerical error and we actually had more in there. Okay, so yeah, so that was one of my clarifying questions. Any other trustees? Tanya, did you have something?
I, yeah, it was more of a, not really clarifying question, but it was just like a question. So I can do it later.
Yeah, if it's part of discussion, then we can do it later.
I think it's more discussion.
Cool, cool, cool.
I have one clarifying question. So I know Lynette works through Boulder County Sheriff's Office. Is there opportunity for funding through Boulder County Sheriff's?
She's actually employed by the county. And I did ask the sheriff and he politely told me no.
Okay, thank you.
That's the worst they can do.
We can always ask again, and I think that that's a good strategy. And I think what, what we need is time to figure out how to sustainably fund the position. And that was, that's what we're lacking at this moment.
Any other questions from the trustees before we go to public comment?
Just as a, I said this while I was talking, but Lynette is on the, on the thing. So if anybody has questions for her as well.
Great. All right, seeing that there are no other questions, there's nobody in the room for public comments. You can go ahead and raise your hand online if you're interested in speaking. And that includes Lynette, if you'd like to speak. All right, I see Lynette, you have your hand raised. You have three minutes, go for it.
Yeah, sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So yeah, I mean, I've really enjoyed working up in Nederland. I've, I feel like I've really made some really strong connections around just community members. I've also worked pretty intensively with the fire department on a few different things. Worked with the library, with the food pantry, also helping out with de-escalation trainings and, and all that type of stuff. So those are the kind of things that kind of come with me. If, if that particular position goes away, those more, those more solid benefits in the community will probably go away as well. Doesn't mean that you guys wouldn't have people responding, but they're going to be responding from, I don't know, some more out on the flats, probably about thirty minutes away. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions down the road. I appreciate you guys, you know, looking at all of this. And yeah, it's kind of a crummy timing. But, you know, again, I've, I've really truly enjoyed working in that specific and just kind of representing folks up in mountain rural areas because I know you guys don't always have a voice. So just really enjoy it.
Thanks, Lynette, appreciate it. Does any, do any of the trustees have questions for Lynette?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Trustee Ty.
The only thing I can think of for Lynette. Do you know of any funding that other small communities would use to support someone in your position? That, you know, where we would struggle to maybe come up with funding for you?
So I don't, so for those of you that know, I came from Lyons, that's where I was posted before. And because this particular grant opened up and they needed, you know, it was, it was active. I got moved up here. And Lyons no longer has funding. I think, I think what we run into is, you know, Erie, Lafayette, Louisville and Superior, other places that we have coresponders sort of nested. Those communities are paying for those positions either through tax or whatever, however they're paying them. This one's a little different because you guys aren't Erie, you're not Lafayette. So I'm not a hundred, I personally don't know of any other funding sources sadly, unless it is partnering with somebody like Lyons or trying to partner, you know, I'm not sure about being creative with other community response or other community partners like fire departments. I'm not sure how that even works if those, if it's like oil and water and they don't play, but that's, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Corvalon, go ahead.
I was just kind of wondering how, how it works when you get called. Is it always in conjunction with a fire department or paramedic or police call? Or do you get called on your own ever?
So that's actually a really great question. And for the most part, I'm really supposed to respond with somebody who's more of an actual badged first responder. It, it tends to be law enforcement a little bit more, but it hasn't been. It's also been with the fire department and that's a little bit different than anyone else on my team. No one else really gets called like that. Part of the issue is just safety. So, you know, making sure that the scene is safe and the community member is safe and that I'm not an extra liability and not having, I don't have a radio. And, you know, certainly limited cell service and such kind of creates an issue about, you know, if I'm going back to West Mag somewhere, you know, making sure that people know where I am or that it's safe. Usually.
Radio, why aren't you connected with the other, with Boulder County Sheriff, since you're part of the department?
That's, that's kind of a bigger, that's something that they're actually trying to work on right now. When we first started, it deals with dispatch and anybody who uses dispatch has to pay into it. So it's kind of a bigger deal, but they are trying to address that particular piece. But that's kind of how I function right now, which is kind of crummy, but I, I know the areas that have service and such, so I try to use those. But once I know somebody, you know, if it's a call that comes up, sometimes I'll, I'll call deputies off so they don't have to go. So I'll be like, yeah, I can go because it's so and so and I know them and I'm comfortable going. So it's kind of dynamic.
And when you, when you find a person that you've dealt with before, are you able to, to send them to resources that can help them in the long term? Or is it more of a immediate, like calming the situation and then leaving?
It could be both. So it kind of depends on what that person's situation is. So I'm also tapped in, you know, I work very closely with EFA, I work really closely with the food pantry, with some of the homeless shelters down on flats, just different providers. There are some, they call them intensive outpatient treatment programs that are set up for folks that are struggling with substance use. I've actually referred and it was a, a really neat referral because that person graduated and they're now holding down full-time job and they're from the community. So I do have lots of different resources that I can also offer up and help kind of guide people through and support them through that process. Of course, somebody can say no, but I'm pretty good at planting seeds. And so down the road, sometimes, you know, they'll be like, hey, I'm curious about that. So I can do all of those things.
That's amazing. Personally, I feel like I, I see just walking around the need for your position on a daily basis. Are you, how many hours a week do you think you find yourself in Nederland areas?
So I'm posted up in Nederland, so I, I work out of the old Ned PD office. I really try hard because a lot of our other team is like in Louisville and Lafayette. So if we have staff meetings, that's an hour drive one way. So I do a lot of my meetings virtual now and I've really advocated for that. So I'm available in the community. So if there's a call, I also reach out to like law enforcement and say, hey, I'm around today if you need anything. So I, I kind of, I'm a pest in a way to make sure that they know I work in and that I'm around and available. So mostly I try to be up in Ned as much as possible. I have one commitment that I'm actually at, down on the flats right now. I work with our Boulder County Cadet Program as a mental health consultant. It's just youth interested in law enforcement, but that's probably eight hours a month. Every, everything else, I really try hard to be, to be up top.
And, and you feel that you're needed, you're, you're not sitting around bored.
No, no, because.
That's my impression of the community, but I'm just, you're, you're busy.
Yeah, and you know, I do have downtime, but like I'm putting together a presentation on hoarding right now for a coresponder conference. You know, so I, I do some things and that's where that case management comes in. So, but yeah, and, and what ends up happening is calls come up in town and I've worked with those people before. And it's kind of a dynamic, hey, I can go to that. And then I can help support law enforcement on that call. And it, it kind of changes the dynamic of, of the entire contact. Or I'll have people, you know, refer to me and they'll say, hey, I don't know what to do with this. And then I'll be like, okay, well, this, this is what we can do moving forward. So it's not like I'm out with the cops every single day. But like today, driving up the canyon, I came across somebody who had a medical condition. And so I was able to stay with them until medical got on scene. So it's kind of weird and random, but I like it.
Wow, well, thank you so much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, seeing none. Come back to the B O T for discussion. Real quick, John, so if we were to pull the ARPA funds to fund this, I mean, because part of what you're saying is we just need time to actually research other funding opportunities. So really what the request is, is to buy some time and to investigate these other opportunities that could fund this position. And we may get to a point where we're not using all of the ARPA funds.
Yes, and one of the reasons I structured this is two questions. The immediate need is to take care of December. And I think what we could do is bring an action item to approve that funding request in December to you so that Lynette has some stability. And then the other conversation would come in the budget, that would be where the approval would come in the budget for two thousand and twenty five. And what I can do and what Rita and I have been working on is trying to determine what our fiscal situation is. If we can fund it without using the ARPA dollars, I'd like to bring that forward. But I really felt like I needed to ask you for direction to put those dollars on the table. It may be possible that I can do it without using all of that money. It just depends on how our conversations work out and like how, how hard cuts get to get to the point where we have a viable budget. So I think that's what I'm asking is to, is to bring an action item to you for December in immediate, maybe the, the next meeting. And then to be directed to be able to, to consider those funds as a potential funding source for two thousand and twenty five.
Okay, so you need a nod of four?
Yes, please.
Okay, I give a nod.
Nod.
Yeah. And, and also just, you know, Lynette, thank you so much for everything you do up here. You know, reading the staff reports, I can tell it's, has a big impact.
I can vouch from experiencing it, that coresponders are very, very valuable.
Okay, John, you got your nod.
Thank you all.
Six point two, secondhand marijuana smoke. And Trustee Miller, I believe you're bringing this one up.
All right, thank you, everybody. As you guys know, I'm relatively new in my seat as a trustee and this is my first aim to present to the board. And I've had support from Billy and town staff and my fellow trustees have given feedback. And I care a lot about this issue and our community. And I want to do this right, so I'm going to just read this first introduction so I don't stumble. I'm bringing this issue before you tonight from a place of personal experience and wider community advocacy. To begin with, I would like to say that I've always supported Colorado's marijuana legalization for recreational and medical usage. I support every adult's right to choose to smoke in their own home. And at the same time, I support everyone's right to enjoy a smoke-free home if that is their choice or their need, especially for children and vulnerable adults. This presents a question for us to answer. Where does one individual's rights begin and when do, where does one, one individual's rights end and another begins? I think we can all agree that no one person's rights are more important than another's. And so I bring this aim forward with our community at heart. The initiative starts with a situation of prolonged unwanted secondhand smoke affecting my own family and our home that predates my appointment to the Board of Trustees. I wanted to share our story with others as I learned that we are not the only ones in this community who want protection from unwanted secondhand smoke for at home and with their families. I recently listened to residents who with, with medically diagnosed cannabis allergies, who compared stories of not being believed and that people have even intentionally exhaled near them, treating their condition, their medical condition like a joke. I've learned that there are members of our community who are unwilling to speak up or unwilling to speak up or go on record because they fear retaliation from their neighbors or ridicule for not being Ned enough. I can share that for my family, we were met with caring board members, town staff and Boulder County Sheriff's Office, who all wanted to help but felt limited by the lack of enforceable code. My hope is that this, my hope is this board will change that for the benefit of all. I want to thank everyone who sent in public comments. We got five letters of support to move this aim forward.
He lost his election and he said he didn't. A hundred and forty police officers were beaten at the Capitol that day, song with the American flag, several later died. And it wasn't just in there.
Hey, Tanya. Mute you. Oh, sorry, not Tanya, who was it? David? Okay, David, we had to mute you because your TV feed was coming through.
Okay.
Trustee Miller, please continue.
I wanted to thank everyone who sent in public comments. We got five letters of support to move this aim forward, including from a Colorado licensed pediatric PA. We received two letters asking for clarification on language or to not move this forward. I encourage everyone to read those if you haven't already. From these letters and other early feedback, I would like to clarify the following points before we move into clarifying questions. The purpose of this aim is that property rights are common to everyone regardless of property status. Meaning if you are an owner or a renter, you have private property rights. Second, this aim does not include any general households, any general household smoke or orders, odors such as barbecues, roasting coffee, dryer vents, car exhausts, et cetera. The aim is limited exclusively to secondhand smoke from marijuana, tobacco, vaporizers or e-cigarettes. Within this discussion name, there is no interest or intent to limit or interfere with anyone's rights to smoke what is legally theirs to smoke on their private property. Enforcement challenges, definitions of violations and what penalties would be are concerns that have been raised. I think these are vital parts of the discussion. And I would also highlight these as things that we would direct town staff to include in their research as we move this forward. And with that, I would like to move to clarifying questions.
Okay. Trustees, clarifying questions?
No, but that was laid out very well.
Thank you.
Might be more of a question for John, but Luke, you just mentioned you've gotten in town, in touch with town staff and with the sheriff's office before. And I'm curious if we know, if there have been multiple reports from other people as well of, of this particular issue. You might not know the answer to this question, but.
I don't think I can tell you that quantitatively. I think this has been something that's been raised several times in the community. And so I think that's what prompted Trustee Miller, or well, Trustee Miller to bring this forward. So I think if that is something, if you do direct us to look into this further, we could try to get some more data about that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I will, just like reading through the Boulder County Sheriff's reports, I did see that there are a number, and I don't know exactly what they are, which this would be again, part of the things I would want to ask is there are several responses to odors in the sheriff's report, sheriff's department report. So I don't know exactly what that is, but they are responding to odors already. And also that just, I think it's worth clarifying that the town already has code that's, that's pretty firm and clear around marijuana odors, smells in public, public spaces with related to marijuana businesses.
Luke, this is Tanya. I, I know you said this has nothing to do with barbecue odors or other particular odors, but how could this not preclude to something like that? Because people are allergic to all kinds of things in this world and many people are allergic to smoke from a campfire that would definitely inmate over to a neighbor's yard. How can you keep this from becoming a sort of precedent towards other odor policies?
I think that's a great.
Smoke is no worse than the odor of a barbecue to many people.
Yeah, and I think that's a great question. I think, and that's obviously part of what we would want to research moving forward. You know, talk to the city of Boulder who has ordinances like this and how they deal with those things. More specifically, there are, I think there are already a number of code ordinances in place for, you know, other noxious, you know, harmful smokes or something, you know.
That would exclude the marijuana, so why recreate?
Well, I, well, unfortunately it, it doesn't. And. And right now, you know, the, the CDC data is really clear about the harms of secondhand smoke, you know, particularly tobacco and marijuana. You know, and not to say that there isn't harmful chemicals in the barbecue smoke or something. I mean, smoke of any sort is not good for anybody, especially if you have health risks. But the intention of the aim is to focus very specifically on marijuana, tobacco and e-cigarette vaporizers.
I mean, I know you had a, a personal problem with your neighbor. I haven't heard of any other situations. And John said he, I would have to come back to us in an additional study. Is a cigarette, somebody smoking a cigarette on their deck? Is that gonna be cause for someone to call the police and create an ordinance against them? Or, you know, like claim the ordinance to give them a fine? Or three people smoking a cigarette on their deck and your deck is nearby? If you live in a neighborhood where the lots are close, is that the intention of this beside, I know, or smoke a joint or whatever, like the wafting of somebody's, I mean, they're smoking outside because it's their yard. How? I still don't understand, what is the, is there a threshold for how much smoke? Is there going to be a quantitative measurement like a, like we do for noise with decibels? Or is it just like, oh, my neighbor's smoking on his deck again, I'm gonna call the police? I mean, like, where does it end? Where does it begin, I guess, is the question, where's the threshold? There needs to be a quantitative measurement for what is a nuisance and what is just normal smoke for somebody having a cigarette on their deck? What is, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, like, like I said, you know, that these are things I would definitely direct to town staff as far as like, how do we research the current municipalities that have this kind of code on, on the debt, on, on their books? Like, what do they do for enforcement? What, how do they define those things? But also I think I would say, you know, somebody's right to smoke a cigarette, smoke a, smoke a joint on their deck, like, that's great. And then at what point does that person's right to smoke a joint on their deck interfere with their neighbor's right to sit on their deck without getting smoked? And I don't wanna say.
Yeah, so what are you doing? Probably, they're done smoking a cigarette, they're back in the house. How do you, how do you even enforce that?
Yeah, exactly. I think that's, that's a worthy question, that's a worthy question to ask. And, and I think that I don't want to say that somebody's right to smoke and somebody's right to have a not smoke and they're on their deck is, one is greater than the other. So I would, I would say that that's something that we need to answer.
I guess.
I mean, I, I mean.
It kind of changes gears a little bit, and I don't want to put you on the spot and test you about our strategic goals. But I'm just curious if you, like, how or if you see this fitting into the strategic goals that have been set for last year and this year? Just because we have a lot on our, our plate, so I'd be curious.
Yeah, I, I mean, fair question, right? And I, I don't know that this specifically fits into any particular strategic goal other than it's just general public health and safety, which I think is something that we are always, is always a priority. And, and the fact that we already have some, some of this code already in our books, it's just not applied to residential areas and, you know, in a public space, somebody can, you can go somewhere else, you know, if it's, you're getting smoked out. Whereas at home, like, where are you gonna go? You know, close your windows, leave your house, like, what, what's, what is it that we expect people to do in their own homes?
Okay, any other clarifying questions from the trustees? All right, let's go to public comment. There is nobody in the room, so we will go online. And Kathleen, I see that you've already got your hand up, so take us away.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Kathleen Chipai, thirty-three-year resident, twenty-two-year business owner. I read the aim, I find it questionable, I see biased language. A conclusion, the summary concludes with these same protections should be extended to include residential areas. Who decided that? It's sounding like Luke is using his spot on the Board of Trustees to pass something that impacts himself. This was never a problem. I also want to say that there's no evidence provided by the CDC or the CD P H E. They make statements that are not backed up. There is no research that proves secondhand cannabis smoke is a danger to anyone's health. There definitely in this aim, I'm reading, it says it causes cancer and has more carcinogenics than tobacco. Another complete fallacy. And I don't like the fact that you've changed around the language. In the aim, it says marijuana may only be used on private property in a manner that is not open and public. Actually, the medical marijuana language in the constitution says no patient shall engage in the medical use of marijuana in plain view of or in a place open to the general public. That's definitely not someone's backyard or deck. I wanna second everything Tanya said while I get that in. Also, um, until I see a study, the CDC is the same bureaucratic agency that's unconstitutional, let me start with, that had the food pyramid wrong for fifty-eight years, something as basic as the food pyramid. And the same people supported standing six feet apart for COVID, and we find out years later confirmed by Dr. Fauci, they pulled that number out of their ass. So that didn't work either. So when we reference these agencies that, and, and you're saying, well, let's go talk to Boulder, they passed this. Let's go talk to one of the four communities with the insanity enough to pass this. I am, they passed all this with no proof of any research documented, filed research that shows anything. Also, when we reference the code, what it currently says, that's language that the voters of the state of Colorado passed. They all voted on it, and it comes straight from the Colorado constitution about the smell, and that's only on amendment sixty-four pop businesses. That doesn't impact any medical user whatsoever. There's no way to enforce. There's a big difference also from what people pass, all the voters versus the town in Nederland moving forward. And I would like to see some research studies. And there's odor with cannabis, whether the plants are growing and nothing's happening, whether you're baking some food, nothing's happening. You, you're smoking, okay, maybe someone else can smell it, but someone else can smell it when you're cooking and your plants are growing. There's no negative, there is no research that shows any of this is necessary, and I'm a little disappointed in Luke and bringing this forward.
All right, thank you, Kathleen.
Using his position on the board to bring a self-serving item up. And it will hinder other people's rights, and there will be a lawsuit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, going once. Going twice. All right, and we will bring it back to the B O T for further discussion. So I, one of the, the things I'm curious to about is, is this the only, you know, recourse? So understanding, because like I can, I can imagine myself living in small confines or some sort of apartment complex or whatnot, like we might be building here pretty soon for affordable housing, secondhand smoke coming in. I'm highly sensitive to it, causes headaches, whatever. But, you know, it's, I, I kind of think and imagine myself like, what would be my recourse? But is the, is what you're proposing is the only, the only opportunity is through code?
So there, there's currently a, actually a, a pretty decent level of protection provided under, I think it's Colorado state law for multi-housing units and secondhand smoke, whether it's tobacco or marijuana, so like if you live in an apartment building, there's pretty solid stuff, which is why a lot of apartment buildings don't allow smoking, because there's no way to mitigate that between units.
Okay, so there are already specific protections within Colorado statute for multi-dwelling units that they cannot smoke outside, like on their balcony?
I, I don't remember the, the exact wording, but there, there is regulations around secondhand smoke in multi-tenant, multi-
dwelling unit or like.
Dwelling unit.
Okay.
Multi-housing units.
Okay, but what this doesn't extend is to like a single-family home, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it doesn't, it, it doesn't extend to any kind of, yeah, residential, single-family properties.
Okay. Attorney Madsen, is there any insight that you can provide for the, the conversation?
I, I don't really have any insight. I mean, I haven't spent time researching it. I think that would be part of the board's direction is if you want to look at this further, that would be, that could be part of, of the review.
And, sorry, go ahead.
No, please.
Well, I was just gonna say, like, that was, you know, a little bit of kind of where we got was like, you know, I, I did a lot of my own research and kind of got to a point where it's like, okay, this, you know, at this point, you know, I need town staff to do more if we're gonna move this forward.
And to be clear, the request is to do the research. I just want to make sure we're using the right words, not necessarily move an ordinance or anything else forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, uh, I don't know that I worded my questions exactly perfect, but yes, I think that, that my, my general sense is, you know, would we, do we direct town staff to do some reach, research to see what an ordinance like this would look like? You know, if we had a ton of support, you know, and we were, we're missing two of our trustees already, so it's hard to say, but, you know, we could say, hey, come up with a draft ordinance, you know, if we're really into it. But I think at this point, it sounds like really we just want to encourage, let's do some research, let's find out what other municipalities are doing, what are the challenges around enforcement? You know, violations, and, and then they can bring it back to us for another round of discussion.
I mean, I'm, I'm in two minds about this because, you know, providing the substance they're using is legal and they're using it responsibly, you know, people have a right to use that substance on their own property. But at the same time, the neighbor has the right to bring, breathe nice air and not have to smell that and be comfortable in their own home, so this is a tricky one. But I definitely encourage more research to be shown so people can help ma, it can help them make their decision, so.
John, how much time do you think this will take to actually research? How much time staff and try not to be conservative here?
Hmm. Probably at least ten hours. We'd, we'd do some research on our end, and then we'd probably be meeting with attorney Madsen to kind of go over our findings. But I don't think a dramatic amount of time, I think it's doable within a reasonable window, but I'm not sure exactly how far down this rabbit hole, you know, it just depends on, we have to do the, the legal review and then this analysis of other communities, so we just have to make sure we get all those pieces.
Trustee Corvallon, is there anything else you want to add to the discussion?
Yeah, um, I think we should bring this back on our next goal in our strategic session plan update. I think right now town has a lot to deal with, the budget and all the things that were mentioned with the grants and any number, there's, there's just a lot that town staff should be focusing on right now, in my opinion. I think we can bring this back when we discuss home rule, we rewrite ordinances. I don't think this is an urgent situation. I think I'm not really in favor of an ordinance at this moment because of the difficulty of even enforcing it and the arbitrariness of, you know, who's gonna use it and who isn't when neighbors are fighting? And just how it opens the doors to other odors, multiple kinds of things that people are allergic to. And, and the fact that it's, it is a personal issue brought about by trustee Miller, and I think he did a great job with the aim, and I think he did a great job with the research. I'm not at all opposed to, to that, but I, I think it, it should be something that should be dealt with either with V C S O or with a civil lawsuit and shouldn't burden town staff and the B O T over something that I have never heard other than from trustee Miller that there was an issue with this of somebody who constantly smokes enough marijuana that it's infiltrating through windows at all hours of the day. And if that's the case, I, I, I think that's, should we have Lynette? That we're gonna be paying for hopefully, and I think that's a wonderful resource to be brought in on these situations that are probably really small. And, um, so that's, that's where I stand. I'm willing to bring this, I'm willing to give this another shot once we bring it into our goal sessions, but I don't think it's in our goals at the moment, and I think we need to finish our goals. We're so not there, so that's where I stand on it.
Yeah, I would just, I just answer a couple of those, I mean, you know, one, the, you know, civil lawsuit or something, I mean, I, I don't think that's fair to put that kind of, you know, financial burden onto a residence who maybe can't afford, you know, a legal recourse. I think it's, it is actually, it is actually something that the town should be there for, you know, for our residents regardless of their income status or ability or how big of a piece of property they can afford to buy or, you know, whatever, you know, mitigation efforts they can afford to do on their own. I think this is something that we can say that, you know, the town is here to protect you. And then I would also bring up, you know, we already have, I mean, the, the wording on our current policy for Netherlands is, is zero impact, zero tolerance in our code for marijuana, licensed marijuana establishments, and that any smell detected at the property line is declared a public nuisance affecting public peace and safety. So that's currently in Netherlands code or marijuana odor at, you know, at businesses. So if, if we've already adopted that code to say this is, you know, we've already declared it to be a nuisance and public health and safety issue, it doesn't seem like a big stretch to apply that kind of protection to people's homes. And, and that the, you know, this, this is like personal rights, I mean, and, and I think, you know, I really support what everybody has said, like, you know, we don't want to impinge on somebody's right to smoke a joint in their house. Yeah, for sure. And I also don't want to impinge on somebody's right to not have that smell in their home, particularly if there are people who are at risk, whether that's, you know, medical condition. Yeah, they're, they're in recovery, you know, whatever, whatever their issue is, they have children, you know, like we, I feel like it's our responsibility to be there and, and in regard to people not, you know, nobody hearing about this. It's not an issue. You know, I, I think, like I said, a lot of people are afraid to speak up, you know, it's not cool to say you don't like weed. Like, there's a lot of people who just kind of granted bear it, they leave, they go in the other room, whatever it is, and it doesn't, I, I think just like that, that silent segment of our residents is not really fair to say that nobody, you know, that's, that it doesn't, that's just me, you know, this is a personal issue, like, I, I know that that is, there's more to it than that.
I just wanted to bring up your point with the current legislation we have is because those are businesses that are manufacturing and processing large quantities. And it's per their license that, you know, that they're not to impact the rest of the, the street of the neighbors, and it's, it's a whole different situation. And you have to have that there because, you know, we've all lived near the grow house that doesn't know how to vent, so that's, that's just like, you gotta have that in our legislation, I don't, I don't see, it's like apples and oranges to me, but that's just my opinion. I, I think we need to bring this back in our next strategic plan session or when we go into the home rule discussion, and we're gonna rewrite things and have a charter written, if that's the route we end up going. And then this could be something that could be brought up and discussed at, you know, we'll be discussing a lot. That's where I stand.
Has Lynette been, I mean, interacting with the the family or have you guys gone down the path of mediation at all?
Yeah, we've talked to Lynette. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the Sheriff's Department.
And I think that question about, sorry to interrupt you.
No, go for it.
I have the same thought about are there other options? Because it feels like an ordinance that may or may not really be enforceable or that maybe it's enforceable, but we don't have the staff or the capability to enforce it, then we have another ordinance, it doesn't serve the purpose anyway. So I'm, I would also be curious if there's other options that we could be pursuing. I'm a big fan of research. I love research. And I think that, you know, this is an issue that's been identified by by multiple members of the community. We've gotten multiple public comments. But with that all said, I I think I do, I agree with Tanya about bringing it back with the strategic plan and trying to make sure that we are clear about our goals with the budget, with the other things, you know, we're we're almost on the brink of a fiscal crisis. It feels like we're close to it. That seems like a pretty big issue that we need to be addressing. And I think this is also a big issue, public safety and and health and wellness are very important. But it feels like we could be diverting attention to other critical issues that we should be focusing on just first.
Um, so this is a discussion item he would need to not afford to turn it on. It looks like we've already got two trustees who are asking to defer, or at least to roll into our strategic goals. Were you going to say something?
Well, I was just wondering, you know, I I tried to talk to John before the meeting, you know, since we're down two trustees, like, does it make sense to, yeah, just bring this back at the next meeting when we have more of us here to come up with a nod or what's? I'm not totally clear on what what the course of action is at at this point with, you know, a sort of a small number of us to give our vote.
Yeah, so I'll probably I'll go ahead and speak my piece. And then I know just from Mayor Billy and his letter that he wrote in that he wasn't too sure on whether or not it should move forward, you know, you know, in terms of anything beyond the discussion. But, you know, I won't speak speak specifically for him. My my perspective is similar to Tanya and trustee Maris is where right now, I don't know, is the answer. It's sort of like, I, you know, this is the same same issue that came up with the term limits that we were discussing, you know, a couple of weeks ago and that, okay, if this is something that we really want to put some time and energy to and staff time, then let's let's fold it into our goals, let's fold it, have a strategic conversation with them. And then yes, if it does end up that we end up going down Home Rule, we've got election term limits to battle out and we've got, you know, potentially secondhand marijuana smoke to also battle out. So so I would be of the same ilk. And that means that then, you know, you would need to get both Mayor Billy and, you know, trustee Larson to also say that now is the time. But, you know, budgets and strategic goals and well, budgets being first, strategic goals being early 20 or Q1 of 2025. So it is around the corner. It's an, I think it would be tough. My personal opinion right now is it would be tough for you to get an ordinance through.
Yeah, I mean, I my my main hope is that we could just direct town staff to do some more research so that we have more information to move forward.
Right.
That's my main, you know, intent.
And I'm debating 10 hours of staff time when I've there's so much other stuff that needs to get done. And so that's it's, this is very tough. This is very, I'm like feeling for you and your family and like your ability to smell clean air. And that's why, you know, curious, like, are there any other recourses that we can take other than going down the full fledged ordinance, which I'm also highly concerned we cannot enforce in a reliable way?
Yeah. And I think that's, I mean, that's where, you know, again, you know, town staff, Porter County Sheriff's, you know, because it's probably going to fall to the Sheriff's Department to do that. And
Yeah.
You know,
And that's an issue.
Right. So that's, you know, I mean, I think those are all just questions that I would like to see answered, you know, before we move ahead. I don't know, John, do you feel like, you know, the amount of time that you would need for this would detract from other tasks at hand?
100%. I'm just going to answer that for him. I know what is on his plate on a day to day basis. This is why I'm mostly concerned. I'm going to stop the conversation here. We do not have a not a four, but we can figure out how to move forward, unfortunately.
One note I'd just like to add is that I have been building what I'm calling a issue tracker, or I don't know what I would call it.
Tracker. I like that.
But I'd like to eventually have this be something that is face like at least facing the board, but maybe it could be public facing too about things that have come up so that we can track what conversations have occurred and like when they might need to come back. And so I will put this on there so that you guys can continue the conversation as you move forward.
Yeah, I would really appreciate that because I'm I'm stumped right now. Like, and I think now timing and everything, but let's keep noodling about it. I don't, sorry.
Good idea, event tracker, just that.
I know.
We know, like, if this keeps coming up that, oh, this this came up in the last BOT and this is important. And again, it's not that I'm not willing to revisit this, but we got to get through budget season and we got to get through some more like pressing issues, in my opinion, before we can have time to really fine tune some of our nuisance ordinances. But I would think it's great to keep this that, okay, we've had a discussion, there is interest or are concerned citizens. And when we're at a more comfortable time with the budget and with time staff time, that would be a good time to delve into it deeper, in my opinion.
Well, I appreciate everybody's input and thank you very much for taking the time to talk it through.
Thanks, Luke, for bringing it. I know this is a tough one. All right. Public comment on non agenda items. There's nobody in the room, so I'll look to online. Public comment on non agenda items. Are we good? All right.
Hello?
Oh, sorry, Kathleen.
Hello?
Yeah, go for it. Do you have a public comment?
Chip, 33 year resident, 22 year business owner. I would like to bring up personal issues being brought up at for the for the town Board of Trustees. I'm really shocked that this is time was spent tonight on this. I mean, more time was spent on this than the fact that the foundational documents in Netherlands are in complete disarray and or completely missing. These are more serious concerns. And I'm, I'm just, again, I'm disappointed in Luke because he just got on the board and he didn't, I don't remember anyone campaigning with this issue at all. I don't know, this issue is the first I'm hearing of it of the cannabis odor. And he admitted tonight it's his first aim. So the Board of Trustees is not to be used as a personal launch board for passing personally things that you personally gain from. That's not what this is about. And I have not heard any discussion about cannabis odor out of anybody. People, hearing people might be afraid to bring it up. Maybe they're afraid because they're actually realize they're bashing other people's rights. Okay, maybe it's maybe it's that. They don't want to be ridiculed, not because they don't like marijuana, but because they maybe don't want to be seen as bashing people's rights because that's what it is doing. So my concern in non agenda public comment is that the BOT is not to be used for personal gain. And I'm really sad that the first aim that that's going to be brought up by Luke is on something he didn't campaign on, didn't mention during the campaign. And I'm bummed out. That bums me out. And I'm, I've been over here asking about the foundational documents for almost 10 years. Never once has it made it to the agenda. There's other people besides me in the community concerned about the foundational record. Not doesn't make it to the board. This is a serious consideration. And when he talks about it, he says, we need to wait till more people are here on the board so we can move forward. My God, I don't know what to say. But this is not a personal access group, the Board of Trustees, to gain personal benefits from. It's unbelievable to me. And I sympathize with Jonathan. There's so much on his plate and the town is going bankrupt. How this is on the agenda is beyond pale to me. And I'm praying to God at some time in the near future, we're going to talk about the foundational record that's been lost or intentionally removed from everything. Amazing. That's it. That's my public comment.
All right. Thanks, Kathleen. Just a real quick follow up. I mean, we all have to start somewhere with a first aim. I appreciate your courage, trustee Miller. I get it, some things that we bring up aren't what we campaign on and and sometimes stuff just happens. So.
Thank you. And it's, yeah, it's just, thank you very much. And Kathleen, I appreciate, I really do appreciate your input. And, you know, I always look to you to be the the voice on the other side. So I'm grateful to your comments. And yeah.
Yeah.
Something that means something to me.
Yeah. And and agreed that we don't use the BOT for like our personal agendas, understood and heard. And just sometimes these things pop up where they could be benefited for the rest of the public. And so it's always a hard line to toe. Any other public comments on non agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Let's move to other business. Any other business? Seeing none. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye. Sorry, that's a little premature. My premature I.
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes, please.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sterling?
Yes.
And trustee Maris?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 9:10 PM.